Clark?
Here.
John, present, Jason?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
Donna?
I'm here.
Thank you, John. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So.
I have a motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
And I have a second by Clark to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Announcements? The next school board meeting, the regular, the next regular school board meeting will be on Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM in the GSL High School Community Room, 443-444. Acknowledgements, do we have any acknowledgements at this time?
I do have a couple. I would first like to acknowledge our high school English teacher, Pat Hiltner. Pat Hiltner was recently recognized by MDE for helping out with the MCA and assessments and working with that committee. So congratulations and thank you, Pat, for your work on that. And then I'd like to recognize all of our fire departments within our school district. And then a special thank you to the Glanco Fire Department with their work with Fire Prevention Week last week. They even had a delivery service of pizza with unhinged pizza. So wanted to say thank you to all of them for their service and their work. Obviously, early in the year, we did utilize their services and all worked out, but had a good week last week with Fire Prevention Week.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any additional acknowledgements? Okay, I'll move on to public input relating to the agenda. First call for public input. And second call for public input relating to the agenda. And the third and final call for public input. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to reports and presentations. And tonight, we have the audit report by Mary Reedy with Clifton Larson and Alan.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am here doing the audit, so Michelle survived another year of the audit. Always thank her for her team, they put us at the top of the list. They seem to want us, get us in and out. Guess I can't blame her. But you have on your table, you should have a big, large bound document that's going to be your audit report. In there, the biggest section there is, to review would be your MDNA. Michelle does take quite a bit of time to write that up. She's kind of a narrative of what happened over the year. Starts with some government wide and then it actually gets into the fund level as well. Otherwise, we put this PowerPoint together. Everything from the PowerPoint does tie back to that audit. So feel free, you know, as we go through this, if you have questions, feel free to stop me. Michelle or I can definitely answer any questions as they come.
And you do have a copy of this presentation that Mary's got, but it also follows the smaller book too. So whichever one you want to follow along with.
Perfect, so we'll go on to page two. Just kind of gives you your changes in fund balances for the general fund there. So we start with revenues and other financing sources up top, and then we put them in the categories where they go and where they hit the fund balance categories there. So revenue's coming in at about 22.2 there, and then expenditures coming in at about 21.5. And as you move across, you can see assigned fund balance was spent down a little bit, ending at about 400,000 non-capital related. Again, spent down some of that restricted fund balance as well, about 30,000 there. And then your operating and LTFM monies, you went ahead and spent down this year too. So then, that remaining change went into your non-spendable and unassigned fund balance, so about an 863,000 increase there. So overall, when you look at that, your budget, your fund balance policy is to be about 20% of your expenditures. Right now, when you include Fund 1 and 10, which we do on the audit report, you're at about 27 and a half percent. If you were to take out Fund 10, you're about 26 and a half. So right about where you want to be, about that 20, a little bit more than that 20% of that. And I believe if you would have, you know, came in a little bit under on revenues like you were expecting for budget, you would have been probably right on. So next page, page three, just like to do a quick budget to actual comparison here. So revenues, general fund at the top is your budget, bottom is your actual. So revenues came in over budget by about 600,000. When you look at that, a big piece of that is going to be your investment income. So as we go through the year, and at the end of the year, we actually have to recognize market value change. So it's not cash in the door, but it's the change in your investments that will be recognized when you cash those in later. Really hard to budget for that. State comes in over budget about 138,000, and then federal actually came in over budget as about 85,000 as well. Expenditures came in at about 21.5, actual about 21.5, so really just minimal, $46,000 difference there. So increase, capital was about 200,000 over budget there. Special education was about 143,000 over, and then your admin costs actually went down by about 109,000 there. Food service, when you look at revenues and expenditures, really close, budget to actual. You budgeted for an increase of 74.5, and you actually came in at about 74,000 positive there. Community service, when you look at this, revenues came in over budget by about 115,000, 150,000. When you look at that, it's state and tuition and fees that really came in over budget there. And then expenditures over by about 39,000. So you actually budgeted for an increase of about 1,600. You came in at a positive 112,000. So really, you were able to run those programs and get students in. Page four. So then, general fund unassigned balance, you can see increased, your biggest, biggest increase there in 2024 when you go back from 2020. So you went down a little bit in '23 and then built it back up in '24. Page five, your assigned fund balance. So any of those, anything that project wise that comes up would come out of there. It's about 400,000, so you spent just a little bit of that last year with the projects that went through there. Page six, when you look at your state mandated reserves. So again, we talked about, you know, spending some of that down. So you're about 132,000 there, which is kind of what you want to do. You want to spend down those restricted monies first when you have the expenses for those, leaving the rest into assigned and unassigned balances there. Page seven, long-term facilities. I believe you had some projects that you were able to use this money for. So you spent down, that down to about 174,000 in the current year. Page eight, your operating capital fund balance. Pretty steady there at about 849,000. And that'll be used for any other maintenance or capital items that come up throughout the years. Page nine, food service fund balance, increased about three, or increased up to 369,000. Here, pretty steady when you look over the couple of years. '24 again was a hard year to plan for. They changed the funding source, of course, there. Last year was paid, and then this year, they switched it again to fully free. So federal and state helped fund that. Really hard to plan to know where that was going to come in at, and you actually came in positive in that balance as well.
We also had a big increase in commodity.
Yes.
Commodity values increased by 30,000 in, in Fund 2.
Really hard to plan for that too. So page 10, community service balance here, you can see increased. Just increase in those revenues that came in, and then were able to hold down cost in that, in those programs as well. Page 11, debt service fund balance. Again, required to levy 105%. Obviously, collecting enough to make your principal and interest payments year over year here, with just a slight increase from prior year. Page 12, so overall, general fund revenues, when you look, state sources is going to be your largest piece here at 77%. If you were to look at this pie chart last year, state would have been reduced and federal would have been a little bit bigger. But you're starting to spend down that extra federal money, and some of that additional funding is coming through the state sources as well. Page 13, so where do those revenues get spent? Here, you want to see your biggest piece be that regular instruction, putting the money back into the classrooms. Special education is going to be another big piece there at 20%. When you add up administration and district support, you're at about 7%. I would say pretty common to be right in the 7% to 10% range there with other schools. Page 14, so you're.
Mary, I have a question for you over here, right here. Got it? So when we look at the general fund revenues, you know, federal sources, so out of our, out of our revenues, that only is 3%, you know? Where does that compare with other districts, and let's say, five years ago and 10 years ago? Is that, is that revenue from the federal government shrinking, or is that typical?
Well, so.
To me, that seems pretty low, 3%. About of all our budget comes from the federal government. So then I just say, what is our role of the federal government in Minnesota education?
Well, I'd say right now, that's even probably a little high, because our ESSR dollars are now all done. Last year, we only received a little under 200,000 in any of the ESSR bucket money, that's all that we have left. So really, in the general fund, our only federal dollars that are coming through is a small portion of special ed and our title programs.
So it's been higher in the past, because we're not getting those.
The last couple of years, it was higher because of ESSR. Prior to that, it wasn't as high, but not as higher than it is now because of title funding drop.
And I would say you're pretty similar to other schools as well. And that's why, when we do the audit, you know, in the last couple of years, we've always said, you know, your federal's going to run out, you've got the extra money coming in. So just be careful on what you're spending it on, right? Because eventually, that money runs out.
It's gone.
Right. So now, you have to, if you continue with the programs or with the positions, then you have to fund, fund it in some other means.
Okay, thank you.
So weighted, weighted average daily memberships here, you can see have decreased in comparison 2023 to 2024. So this drives a lot of the state aid. However, there was quite a bit of funding change this year with an increase in state. And actually, when you compare to last year, you're up 2 million from last year's state aid. Page 15, so then we like to do the comparisons. Again, dark blue is going to be the school district. Light blue will be similar sized district, and then the yellow will be state, just a year behind. State takes a little bit to, to collect those information, so just a year behind there. So when you look at district and school administration, you're about the same as prior year for expenses. But as you decrease in students, right, you increase in that bar chart. So it goes up because you're dividing that out by student count. So you can see you're well below districts of similar size as well.
And the one new program that got added into this category was our achievement and integration program. So that added a little bit of expense to this category as well. Even though it was revenue neutral, you know, we got the revenue in and spent the same amount going out, it still shows up in this chart as an expense.
Page 16, overall regular instruction increase from last year. When you look at the numbers, you're up about 120,000 in the category of regular instruction. So definitely putting it back in the classroom as you're above similar districts and even the state average there. Page 17, vocational instruction here, up about 20,000 from prior year, and then still, still below similar size in the state there. Just depends on what, what programs the district has to offer in those categories. So page 18, special education, up about 230,000 from prior year for cost here. So you're about state average the last couple of years. Page 19, instructional support, up about 200,000 here. I believe there were some new technology purchases and such, right, Michelle? This year, that would have gone into this category, which would be the increase from prior year.
And, and some curriculum purchases.
Page 20, overall pupil support services here. Cost, pretty similar to the prior year. Again, the bar chart will go up just with a decrease in students here. Page 21, sites, buildings and equipment. Again, pretty similar to prior years. Pretty consistent year over year on your maintenance and such. And just depending on the age of the buildings in comparison to other schools your size, this depends on how much you have to put back into your buildings. Page 22, then, your capital expenditures. Here, up about 200,000 from prior year. Just definitely purchasing more of those capital related items in the current year than you have in the past few years. Page 23, overall transportation. There's a slight decrease here. Again, it's just going to be the cost. I believe you had a contract new this year as well. Page 24, food service. When you look, overall, food service costs remain fairly similar. With other school districts, we've actually seen that increase pretty significantly from prior year, just with the cost of food. So to be able to maintain that is pretty good. Community service here. Again, expenditures increased quite a bit, but overall, when you look at the revenue, it was able to support those increase in expenditures.
One of the big things here would be the, the new daycare program that was added last year. And that wasn't for a full year, but it started last September. So that was a big driving cost there along with some equipment.
And then 26, overall debt service. And when you look at this, well below districts of similar size. What this could mean is that you're, you're putting dollars in the sites, buildings and equipment, right, to maintain and do yours, whereas everybody else is paying for the bonds on those projects that are going on. So that was a brief overview. Not sure if there are any follow-up questions?
Anyone have additional questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary, for your time.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Okay, we'll move on to administrators and committee reports.
Thanks, Mary.
Michelle, when you're ready, would you like to start us?
All right, thank you. So what I'm going to do is just follow up a little bit with Mary's presentation. I shared some information last week. We had a finance committee, so they've kind of heard some of this already. But as you know, I kind of take the audit data and break it down a little bit into our spreadsheets that we're used to looking at. So I left you a handout that's got the packet of spreadsheets, and then the summary, the financial focus, what we'll get into a little bit. So the, the top page of your packet just includes our 23-24 budget. You can see what the original budget was that was approved at the beginning of that fiscal year, the revised budget, and then the final budgets in purple there. So I'm not going to read these numbers for you, you can certainly read them for your, you know, by yourself. But just to give you a snapshot of what, what happened with those numbers from where we started and where we ended. As Mary mentioned, the ADMs did drop about, when we did the revised budget back in June, we had 1,416, and we ended at 1,424 ADMs. So right there, that's a difference of eight, little over eight. That when you do the formula allowance for that, it's about $90,000. So that's part of that revenue change that we talked about on the general fund being over budget by 600,000. So I just wanted to touch on a couple other areas to, to address that 600,000 that we were over budget, which to me is always a good thing on the revenue side, to be a little higher on the revenues and be under on the expenditures. So special ed revenue was an increase of about 58,000. The interest earnings, as Mary mentioned, was 150,000. Third-party billing, 23,000. Non-public transportation was about 34,000. Some miscellaneous revenue that came in was 90,000. That was some money from LCTN and wellness incentives. The TRA adjustment was 52,000, and then federal flow-through was 100,000. So that's just kind of a, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, it adds up to that 600,000. On the expenditure side, we, we're actually under budget. When Mary gives you the numbers, she talked about the student activities. They include that Fund 10, and in the reserved categories, they include the student Fund 21. I pull those out, because even though they're under board control, you have control of those accounts, we're not going to use those accounts for operating expenses. We're not going to take that money and pay the band teacher salary. We're not going to pay the science teacher salary. So we leave those alone. Those are raised by the students, for the students, for those specific reasons. So I pull those out, because to me, that's not, well, let's count on 200,000 from student activities to help fund our, our regular general fund expenses. So when I pull those expenses out of, on the expenditure side, we're under budget by four, a little under 15,000, 14,688. So very close on the expenditure side. I anticipated that would go over a little bit more because of a couple facility projects that we anticipated being done in June that didn't get done in June. One was the greenhouse, the other was the seal coating. Those were kind of the big ones that were supposed to be done, but they got shifted back. So you end up shifting those type of things around. So when she talked about the fund balance and where we're at compared to policy, and I'll get to that, I guess, when I get to the fund balance sheet. But when I pull those out on the unassigned fund balances, it leaves us about a 92-day, 92-day operating capital with our fund balance. We always have said, let's kind of shoot for that 20% or that three-month window. So we're kind of right in there at that 92 days. Now, that amount changes every year based on, your students go down, but your operating costs still go up. So, you know, you've got that fluctuation in there. So that's kind of a summary on the, the first page of what I gave you. The second page, two-sided, this is where I break down the difference between the reserved accounts and the unreserved. And I've shared with this, with the finance committee the other night, in your big packet, just make a note for yourself, on page 50 of that big packet, there's a little bit more detail on what all falls into the restricted fund balances. So it just kind of helps you, you know, we're used to it here in the district, but you guys, this isn't your everyday language. So you kind of like forget what goes into those different restricted categories. So that's kind of a nice summary for you to refer to if you have questions on what goes into restricted accounts. So this kind of breaks that out. Section A, or row A there, you can see what's in the revenues and expenditures. That ended up at that 25% fund balance, and then all your restricted accounts or your reserved accounts. A lot of those, we try to spend all that money that we get in, whether it's learning and development, basic skills. We don't want to carry those fund balances over. So we, we use those monies to identify the needs that we have. The other couple changes in our revenues this year, which we, you know, we accounted for, but we didn't know how they were going to end up as, in a fund balance, is the new money that came in was the student personnel aid, was $40,000. We were not able to use that. And still, back at the end of May, the information that we had was that money was going to have to go back to the state. Legislation changed things right at the last minute, and they allowed school districts to carry over that money for one year. The portion that was coming to the school districts to be used for the co-ops could not be carried over. So that 40,000 goes back to the state. But we got to keep our 40,000, which allowed us to be able to fund our SEL coordinator for this year. So we had last year's 40,000 and the new 40,000 this year. So it's, was very, very specific in how that money could be used, and that's why we weren't able to spend that money, because it could only be used for certain staff. The other new category that came in was $40,000 in library aid, and we did spend some of that to get some things for our media centers at all three of our sites. Then the achievement and integration money that I mentioned, that's kind of in and out money with the programs that we're running for that. So you can kind of go through and look at those numbers, and then you'll see the balances for the Fund 10 and the Fund 21. The assigned was that 400,000 that we've had set aside for quite a few years. We had moved some money in there, and that's where we had put our 27,000 that we got from the Stevens Seminary for the sale of the bus garage, and we used that this year to apply towards the greenhouse. So it leaves that balance back at 400,000. On the backside, then, it goes through Funds 2, 4, debt service, and the scholarship account. So I just wanted to mention, in Fund 4, with our basic skills money, we got, you know, a substantial increase in that category again. And you are allowed to use that for some of your earlier, early learners in our early childhood programs. So we did use some, let's see, I've got, about 73,000 is what we used in Fund 4. And we did that to help out the negative balance that we've been running in school readiness for quite a few years. So we're like, let's do something to get that program back up out of the red and get them at a positive fund balance. So that was a way to use basic skills to help our younger learners as well. Then she mentioned the debt service is up a little bit, but then we'll see another levy adjustment when we get to truth and taxation of how much the levy is reduced when we oversee what that fund balance can be. The other changes in Fund 4, I mentioned a little bit, was the daycare program that got added. That program is up and running good. Commodities in Fund 2 affected that, as well as the increase in, from the universal meal program, that also increased the revenues in Fund 2. So then the third page is just looking at the 24-25. I've started working on budget revisions for the 24-25. When we get into November now, I'll really focus on, we should have staffing pretty much all set, so I can start looking at what we had budgeted and where everything is falling into place for that. I've kind of looked at all the other categories. So again, you can see your numbers that were approved back in June, and the column or the sections in red that are, the revised, the revised budgets, and I haven't done anything in any funds except Fund 1 so far. The one thing that comes into place for all districts in the state is declining revenue, declining enrollment revenue. So when a district has declining enrollment, they have a calculation, it's 28% of the funding formula allowance times whatever number of pupils that you're down from the previous year. So it does pull in for us almost $100,000. So when we say, you know, So when we say, you know, enrollment's down, so gen ed is down, even though the formula allowance went up, so you gain a little bit there, but your pupils are down, we gained back a little bit more because of the declining enrollment revenue. So it's a little bit of help, 28%. It's kind of, it was put in place a number of years ago, because all of a sudden, districts were losing money and you had no time. All of a sudden, fall hit, you're down students, you can't reduce staff at that point. So it was a way to help districts kind of for that year, help some planning. So it gave you a little bit of cushion to get you through. And then the last page just kind of shows the fund balance. Back in June, I was projecting we'd be at about a 24%. We ended at that 26%, so a little bit higher. And that came in because of those extra revenues. Usually about every $100,000 is about a 1% change for us. So you can see why that jumped a little bit. Now, looking already at this year's, at this point, we're already at a 22% fund balance as I'm looking at things right now. So it already drops without even doing much budget revision. So still above our policy yet until we start working on all those salary revisions that will have to take place. We'll see how close we were to budget, but. So then the last sheet I just wanted to cover, so I take all that data for you. I take the audit, and I put it together out of two-page documents. So if you look at the financial focus, I don't know if you've used this or if you find it helpful as a board. It's, like I said, a snapshot of all this data. So if you're talking to people in the community and you, you know, you can certainly share this, it is posted on the website as of today, but it just kind of summarizes the fiscal year 2024. So it gives you your pupils, the total budget, total number of staff. It breaks down those general fund expenditures by category, between salaries and then benefits, purchase services, supplies, equipment, and dues, and memberships, so you can see where all the money is going. If you take your salaries and benefits, it comes to about 68.5% of the total budget in general fund. Everybody always said, you know, you spend about 70% of your money, some districts are a little higher depending on their staffing, in salaries. For us, it's just under 70%. And then on the right-hand side, you can see what Mary talked about there, where the revenues are coming from, between the state sources, federal, local property taxes, investments, and other categories. And those numbers do not include the Fund 10 or 21. On the bottom is just the fund balances for all the other funds. And on the backside, I'd just like to highlight, okay, what are things that are on our radar right now regarding FY25 and beyond? Couple things that I want to mention that I added. We just got our final, or our bill for, third quarter for unemployment. This is a huge topic, as you know. It's the summer term unemployment, it's called. So our bill that we've paid now for June, July, and August unemployment is 127,000. Just got an email late today. I have to do the survey now for MDE so they can report to the legislators. They've already told us, don't expect any funding in FY26. We don't know yet how much of this is gonna be covered for FY24. They thought they, you know, when they put this in place, there would be enough funding for two years, but we're gonna have to watch that closely. Because if there is no additional funding for that, that's gonna be coming out of your general fund. Now, it's possible the legislators are gonna look at it and all of a sudden say, okay, we'll give you levy authority, which wouldn't be good for us, because that means a property tax increase. But they've been known to do that before. So that's a, it's a big item to keep our eyes on, is that piece. The compensatory funding is another area that they don't know what they're gonna do yet with funding and how that's gonna look in funding after this year. So that's another huge area that we need to keep an eye on. If you look on the, towards the bottom there, where I've got the box for compensatory funding, you can see where we were back from FY20, and then how it went down in FY22, when they changed how they did things, and now the last two years, when the legislators and the Department of Education recognized what was happening, and they bumped that up again. This compensatory number that I have here is a combination of basic skills and the English learner's revenue and the English learner's cross-subsidy, which is just a couple thousand dollars for us. But they did increase that formula allowance for the English learners the last couple years in the legislative sessions. So that went up a little bit, but it's combined altogether to be basic skills revenue. So just a snapshot for you of the original FY25 budget, some things to watch and to monitor, and then just the information I always keep on there about the operating referendum, because pretty soon we'll get to the point where we'll say, okay, when does that expire? When does that expire? So it expires in '29. We passed it in 2019. And just a note, you know, when we passed it in 2019, we were at $460 a pupil unit is what we asked our voters for. And now, for this year, it's at $554.17, and that's because of that inflationary language. So it does help as we keep going. So it does add up a little bit. So that's just the operating referendum information. That was a lot, really fast, so I'll let you digest that. If you have questions, give me a call, send me an email. Unless you have something right now that pops into mind that you want to ask, go ahead.
Michelle, just one quick clarification. With our fund balance policy being at 20%, is that 20% with or without the Fund 10 and 21 for the fund balance policy?
Let's see, it is without.
Without, thank you.
If you read the policy, it does not address Fund 10 and 21. Now, you could certainly change that. I don't, I don't see any reason why you would want to include that. Again, those funds are under board control. They get included in the reports that go to the state and in the government-wide statements with part of the audit. But like I said, we're not gonna look to use those funds to cover our operational cost.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yep. And the only other things I had, just some LTFM projects that we're working on. The greenhouse is about wrapped up. They're running the internet to that today. The sign should be here any day. And we're working on a bunch of new projects, new bids we're collecting. So I'll be meeting with the facilities committee real soon on that, hopefully by January to get everything lined up for next summer on that. So it's nice to have those dollars to keep maintaining our buildings and keep them looking as good as we can, so.
All right, just some questions for Michelle? Okay, we'll move on to principals' reports. Bill, can you get us started?
Yep, excuse me, yes, I will. Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. I'll highlight some of the items on our written report. You know, I'll start at the top with the science of reading. You can look at pre-K. We are starting to do the work, individual work behind the scenes, and you can see our first live session is scheduled for December. Teachers in K through 12 will have a live session on Wednesday morning. And we were really fortunate, last week, the elementary team had a strategy session with one of the letters facilitators named Tammy. And that comes along with the purchase that was made. So we'll have a couple more of those before the year is out. Just really giving us some good guidance on, you know, tweaking our benchmark assessments, what screeners we need to be using by grade level. And so our next task with that team will be putting together by grade level, K through six, what screeners to give at what time of the year, and more importantly, how to use them. So we spent a lot of that half hour with Tammy on a spelling screener for the early grades, so we appreciated having that opportunity. The other new team we formed over the summer, the Tier 1 team, we took a close look at behavior data, looking at some trends last week, which is always interesting. You know, looking at the number of referrals we're having, where they're occurring, what grade level, and then looking down, you know, for intervention purposes, what students might need some extra support. SEL coordinator came up in the budget discussion. We are, we're benefiting in so many ways from that position. I want to point out one of the ways. So we are, we've been able to have a kindergarten-specific counselor out of that position. So when we have that position at Lincoln Elementary, it's a kindergarten-specific counselor. And, you know, we don't know yet, because it's early, but when we look at behavior referrals at kindergarten at least, comparing September and very early October to last year, they're down. So we'll look at those trends, but we are so grateful to have that position. It complements what our, you know, our other counselor position is split, halftime counselor, halftime school psychologist, so it really complements that well. I'll go down to the bottom. Federal dollars came up. So you can look at the title budget. You know, the one I pay most attention to is Title 1, Direct Intervention Services to Kids. Looks like, you know, if my math is correct, we were, it was down about 8% from the previous year. You know, and when people ask, and Michelle, if I make a mistake, you're correct me, when people ask, you know, are free and reduced, we're certainly not going down. Why are the dollars going down? So my explanation is that our share of the Minnesota pot is going down because other districts are increasing at a faster rate than we are in terms of their allocation. So I don't know if that's a very, it's okay to use that? So anyway, that's why while we're not decreasing in free and reduced, the budget is going down. So we won't know what to expect, you know? Will it be another 4% reduction? We'll see. I will go to the back, and let's just look under school-community partnership. Mr. Sanju mentioned Fire Prevention Week. You know, the highlight of that is kindergarten students riding back from the fire hall on a fire truck. We've got parent-teacher conferences going on right now, the book fair, Veterans Day coming up, and looking, you know, to do some hiring for long-term subpositions. And I want to acknowledge Linda Matoszek for the book fair. When I left to come down here, it was super crowded, and she was managing that with a lot of professionalism and a smile on her face. So we appreciate Linda. So what questions do you have?
Bill, the screeners that you're mentioning, that you were talking with Tammy, one of the consultants and stuff with Letters?
Yeah.
Those screeners that you're looking at by grade level, how will that impact the check-in days at the beginning of next school year and/or the future?
Yeah, that is a great question, and that came up at the end of our session. So Jamie, right now, I don't know. And we will, that's one of our tasks in that science of reading team and with our facilitator, to answer that, you know? Because, you know, when will we collect the best data? When is it most useful? So we will, we will answer that, and I'll report back probably, you know, mid-spring, I'm thinking so.
How will that impact the discussion with regard to calendar? Having those check-in days already on the calendar? And I'll kind of make a little bit of an assumption that I've heard very many good comments about being able to collect the data and having those days as check-in days at the elementary, and I think that there's a big benefit to that. And to your point, as those discussions continue, I think that that is great discussions to continue to have, because I don't know that they would necessarily go away as much as, like you were mentioning, the data that's collected may be different data that's been collected. But to your point, the timing of the data collecting is something that you guys will have to have a discussion about and see. But how does that impact the calendar for, let's say, next year? Because of course, that would be the most
Right.
the soonest of impacts, and then down the road it could be talked about.
And you're saying that we would still need them, correct?
That is, I think, what they have to make a decision in.
Yeah.
I'm under the assumption that, I am hearing that there's definitely a value to it
A need, yeah.
and a need. And I think it does benefit our district having those and the data collecting. The data that's going to be collected, I think, will be discussed, but.
Right. And honestly, you know, we'll be able to kind of go through, and Bill can get those datas. If you want to shift gear into check-in days from logistics, it's really nice having one day of 7 through 12, and having kids come in from K through 6, getting a review of things, understanding things, and then the next day is when they all come in. So there is a benefit to what we are doing from just the smoothness of everything and having people know where they're going and that kind of stuff. And so I'm supportive of them because of that reason, but obviously, the data is also very important. That was the reason why we went to it. Certainly want to have as much time in front of teachers as we possibly can, but it is something that, when that first day of school comes around, it's worked the last couple of years, so.
Yeah.
And just one more thing, Jamie. You know, one example from this year, we did make a significant change in what we used for the check-in days. We got rid of the Fanta's and Pennell because it didn't align with the science of reading, and then replaced that with more of the Fast Battery. So we will, we're learning a lot, and it's much appreciated, yeah, to have that opportunity.
Good, and thank you for those, the update that you not only gave today, but also the work that's being, continues to be done by the staff and by administration with regard to the Letters training, the live sessions, and the continual learning by staff. I think it's really good, Pete, professional development.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Matt?
You're welcome. Good evening. So mine's gonna be pretty brief, but I did want to start by saying, I don't think I got a chance to say this in September. This has probably been one of the best starts of a school year that I've had since I've been in this position, and this is the seventh year. And I think it's important for you guys as a board to hear that. I don't know what I attribute that to, but this first two months of school have been fantastic. So I wanted you guys to know that. The students have been good, the parent support's been great. In the, in the report that I'm gonna give here right now, we do have parent-teacher conferences tonight. So before I came in, I did get to meet with several parents that were in the halls and hear on positive notes, not just, hey, I have an issue and I need to talk about it. It's, school's been going well, and I want to talk to my parent, or talk to my parents while, my parents are educators, but they're not here tonight. Talk to my children's staff members about how the year's been going. So it's been off to a great start. At the beginning of October, we started with our Panther Power Hour and what I need or win time at the high school and junior high levels. Slight adjustment that took place about, probably halfway through last year. Power Hour used to be a Tuesday-through-Friday thing, and that was something that I inherited when I came here. COVID kind of interrupted the process of what that looked like in the middle of my time here. And then last year, we really started looking at, you know, the effectiveness of having Power Hour every day versus having a study hall every day as well. And it just wasn't, the two were kind of contradicting each other. So about halfway through last year, we changed our Power Hour schedule to be just Tuesday, Friday. And if you'll notice, our win, or what I need at the junior high, which is essentially the same thing, but for our junior high kids, that is run every day, Tuesday through Friday. And I've had a couple of questions about that in the past, as to why do you allow your seventh and eighth graders four days a week and your senior high kids two days a week? That seems kind of counterintuitive. And the reason for that is Panther Power Hour is one hour in length. It's basically from 11:35 to 12:35. What I need at the junior high level is about 24 minutes long. So it's less than half the time. It's a lot more structured, and it's half the kids. So that's the explanation as to, we're trying to manage about 230 kids at the junior high level, whereas at Panther Power Hour, we're looking at about 460, something like that. So it's just, it's worked very well. I think the kids appreciate the two days a week. The opposite of that, they're in wrap, so advisory on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. This year has started great. We've typically had a honeymoon period where Power Hour starts, and then the next week, we have some issues with it with kids not necessarily abiding by what they're supposed to be doing. The biggest part of that is kids do get scheduled through their infinite campus where they're supposed to be. So for instance, I scheduled detention. If a kid needs to serve detention, I schedule in their infinite campus. It shows up on their schedule. They check their schedules, or they're supposed to be checking at first, second, or third hour. It will show up there. Kids know that if they don't show up to where they're assigned, then Power Hour will go back to advisory each day, so that they're following those expectations. And this is the best-attended year that I've had with it. And I mean this in a positive way, but it's probably not gonna sound very positive. very positive. The very first detention that I assigned, I assigned 34 kids to detention for various reasons, mostly tardies due to the first start of school. And I make sure that I approach it directly, right away when Power Hour starts. Of the 31 kids assigned to detention, 30 showed up, and the one that didn't was sick. So that's what I mean by kids utilizing it the way that it's meant to be utilized. I did meet with them the day before it started, so that would have been, you know, the Monday before we did Power Hour and win. I met with every grade level individually and talked about the importance of, you know, being where you're supposed to be at, following through on your expectations of getting your work done, because there is a purpose to this time. It's not just, hey, you have this 30 minutes or this hour to yourself. It's, if you have a missing assessment, you need to take that. If you have a missing assignment, you need help on it. You get assigned somewhere. So it's been a really great start to the year with Power Hour and win, which is in addition to what I talked about at the start of the school year being very well. But I think our kids are just ready to be back and ready to understand what those expectations are, and also know that it can be taken away if it's not used. So it's been a positive there. With school and community partnerships, like I talked about, we have our conferences tonight. All staff are in their individual classrooms. I know that that's changed a couple times over the...or once since I've been here. We used to be in the media center. For the last several years, actually since COVID, staff have just been in their individual classrooms. I think that helps both a parent and a staff member kind of get to know each other of, okay, this is where my kid comes to class every single day. This is where they learn. This is what the environment is. So that's something that has worked very well since that change has taken place a couple years ago. We did have our blood drive on October 4. And I always talk about this. We have two blood drives a year because I think it's important for the board to know and the public. This is something that we've held very tightly, that we keep with just our students or staff that donate. And I know the American Red Cross has wanted to open this up to a public donation site, and I understand the request for that because there is a blood shortage, and we hear about this quite frequently. The reason, in my view, through hosting blood drives at the high school, and I could have an argument either way with this, but it's to try and get individuals that become donors for life. So we have a lot of first-time donors. Of the 49 presenting donors that we had, I think 25 of them were first-time blood donors. And trying to create this environment where they're amongst their peers, they're amongst their friends, and they're comfortable to donate. So when they graduate after they're 18, and they do see a public donation site, they're more apt to go, hey, I'm going to go donate now. And I think it's important that I have that conversation as well, because I think our 49 presenting donors could be 79 presenting donors if we opened it to the public, but I think it just becomes more of a public donation site then as opposed to our students. And I don't know if that's really emphasizing lifelong donations after it. So that's my thought process. That's something that may change in future years, but that's something we've held to throughout the time that I've been here. And then lastly, under acknowledgements, I just wanted to talk about our homecoming court. We did have homecoming. I think coronation was on September 20, which was right after our last board meeting. We did do coronation in front of the entire school. Our kindergarten through 12th graders were in attendance in the black gym, and I was very nervous because it was a change. And anytime you change anything, there seems to be some feedback, both good and bad. And it's one of the very few things that I've done in the seven years where all of the feedback I personally heard from staff and parents was positive. And I thought the negative feedback would come from the parents of the students who were in coronation because they would have to take off of work to be there. That's who I received most of the positive feedback for, was they loved the amount of students that were there that got to experience that with those kids as opposed to coronation at night where we had maybe 50 or 60 kids or people that showed up. We had 1,400 people in the black gym that watched this, and it was a pretty...it was a pretty electric environment. I know our seniors enjoyed it. You know, my wife's an elementary teacher. She talked about how excited her kindergarteners came back and how much fun it was, and I think they had a better understanding of what homecoming is at the high school level. So that's something that I would like to continue next year if the board supports and the kids continue to support as well. So that's my probably long-winded, short board report. Any questions I can answer for you?
No questions, but I just wanted to make a comment about the blood drive. My youngest son was...or always donated blood to every time we had a blood drive, and he agrees with you that it is nice to have it just the kids instead of having the public. He still continues to donate blood every time he sees one, and he's a teacher now, and he's in his third year, and he's at the second year at the same school, and now he's trying to start one at the school he is at. So, good job.
That's awesome. Kind of funny story, and it'll take just a short amount of time. I always look at the data of, how many presenting donors do you have? How many deferrals do you have for whatever reason that is? How many units are collected? Well, I had a new one this year. Under it, it said walkouts, and we had one walkout. And I thought, God, what happened? Like, somebody came in, and like, they were watching, and they must have gotten nervous, and like, I wonder who that was. And then I reflected a little bit longer. It was me. I was there waiting to donate, and I had an issue happen at the end of the day, so I had to step out, and I never made it back. So that was kind of an epiphany I had when I was looking at the email I got from them.
Matt, a quick question that I have. You did a great job articulating the Panther Power Hour and what I need, and mentioning the Panther Power Hour as one hour for the senior high and 24 minutes for the junior high. The wonderment that I just kind of have is, with the Panther Power Hour on Tuesdays and Fridays, I'm just kind of wondering, and it's kind of a calendar thing again, just kind of wondering, how many Fridays were missed on a calendar because of, let's say, MEA, let's say Thanksgiving? And for the senior high, they would still have, of course, that one hour on Tuesdays, but I'm just wondering, kind of as a wonderment, how many one-hours of the Fridays might they be missing? The junior high, of course, having that Tuesday to Friday, and granted, it is only 24 minutes, have a little bit more wiggle room of if they do lose a Thursday and Friday because of Thanksgiving or something. There's still some wiggle room there, but just a wonderment that I have, and it's a calendar-type of question, I guess.
That's a good question. And what we do, and I can give you two examples of it, actually. So when we had our blood drive on the 4th, that was a Friday. Well, the blood drive takes place in the Purple Gym, and that's one of the locations that kids can be during Power Hour. So that particular week, Power Hour was Tuesday and Thursday. So we adjusted it so that they could still have that time. This week, because we're on a shortened schedule, we have Power Hour today and tomorrow. So those are things that we look at, too. You know, I always say that RAP is a Monday. Truth be told, RAP is the first day of the week. So there's like Mondays that we won't have school. RAP then becomes Tuesday, and then Power Hour becomes Wednesday. So officially, it's Tuesday, Friday, but we modify it quite frequently to make sure that they're still getting both of those days throughout a week.
Perfect. Thank you. That's great.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My take for the blood drive is that it's important to make sure that the needle goes into your vein in order to do that. That did not happen to me, so my experience was, they probably got, you know, 49.25 liters of blood officially, but didn't work out that much for me, but I tried. Couple other things from my report. Number one, we had our first community schools meeting last Thursday. We also have another one coming up in November, and then our career conversations. Community Schools Meeting will be happening in December, so looking forward to that. LCTN update, there's really nothing to update on that except for the fact that our day-to-day operations with the internet, with Southwest West Central, you know, running everything is going just fine. So, but nothing really new to report on any of the other stuff. Interesting program that Southwest West Central has that I thought it would be really good for the board to know. They have a program that they work through the state of Minnesota through a special education teacher pipeline grant, where they're trying to promote paraprofessionals, support staff members to head, and get their license in special education. Right now, GSL has seven different paraprofessionals that are in that program, which is really, really awesome to see, and it is one of the highest groups around the area. And so that program is working through Southwest West Central. They're going through that, and ultimately, it's designed for those support staff members to go get their license in special education. And as we know, special education, along with some of other areas of teaching, there is a high need of that. So congratulations to those seven staff members that are doing that. So really cool. As you know, tonight, we have our next forum for the roof project. We had one last week in Play-Doh, so thanks to the board for coming out for that and the community member that showed up. Tomorrow, I'll be talking with some of the residents at Orchard Estates, and then next week, going to Grand Meadows. I also went to a senior classroom this last week and talked a little bit about the election, talked a little bit about the bond, talked a little bit about the finances and those types of things. So that was happening. And then, finally, I just want to say special congratulations to Anna Severt. She disqualified for the state tennis tournament today, so congratulations to her and best of luck. Also want to say congratulations and best of luck to our FFA team. They are heading to the Nationals. We have three different teams competing in Indianapolis, and they are the Ag Issues Teams, the Ag Sales, and the Spanish Creed Speaking. So best of luck to them as they head off to Nationals. And then, I know that we've done this before, but we'll do it again. Thanks to Michelle, and thanks to the rest of the staff for all their work with the audit. They did a great job. And once again, I know that when I talk to Mary and I talk to the other auditors that are in our office working, they always tell me how good of a staff that we have working. So thank you once again for all your work with that.
Thank you. You guys make it look so easy. Any questions for Chris? Okay. Any committee reports tonight?
We had a finance committee. It was pretty much covered with the audit discussion. And once going to echo what Chris said, thanks to the district office staff and Michelle. Also in Chris's report, when he was mentioning FFA, maybe I should have mentioned under acknowledgements, but the FFA did do a presentation to the city of Glencoe, and that was a really nice presentation that they gave to the city of Glencoe. And you may notice on the outskirts of town, on the Glencoe signs with the population, that there are blue signs designating our community as an FFA community. And those were given by the FFA as a presentation at the city of Glencoe at the city council meeting on Monday, which, like I said, they're already... the city's already put them up. And I noticed on 212 coming in to Glencoe from the east that there's an FFA sign up there right on the Glencoe population sign. So we are an FFA community, and it's not only great to celebrate agriculture in our community, but our programming that we have here at GSL supporting that. So I just thought of that as Chris gave his report, so thank you.
Thank you for that, Jamie. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to approve tonight's consent agenda. It was enclosure number one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Was that Jamie? Okay. I have a motion by Jamie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Jason to... Okay. To approve tonight's consent agenda, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Action carries. Consent agenda is approved by five and one at the same. So old business, none at this time. And new business, donations received, information only. We have a list of many donations from organizations within our community to many different sports and other elementary organizations at our...within our district. So thank you to those generous donations. We'll move on to action item B, bonding refinancing. And Allers is here tonight. This is just information only, and then there is an enclosure to follow along with as well.
Yeah, because that's the only way the streaming will show up. Whatever you want. Do you want me to run it, or you can run it? Should be, see if it works. Yep, there you go.
It works. Yep.
There you go.
Is this on?
It was. Don't push it again. Push it again.
There it goes.
All right. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here with you. My name is Jeff Seeley. I'm with Allers, and we have worked with the district for many, many years on financial matters. So you have a potential refunding opportunity, and we're going to talk a little bit about that, the...what the potential savings might be, what the current market indicates, and what the timing of it might be. So to get into this, so you have...you have two bond issues. One of them is a tax abatement bond. It's smaller. It is not callable, so that's not part of this conversation, although in one of the slides I listed, so you understand you have a second bond issue out there. But the first bond issue, it's your general obligation school buildings bonds. It's Series 2015A, which basically means it was issued in 2015. The power amount was about $23.7 million, and it was a result of the successful election in May of 2015. And you can see what that bond financed at that time. Relocation of grades K-12 to existing 712 campus, improved safety, repurposed program space for the Lincoln Junior High School and the high school, and to complete window upgrades at the Lakeside Elementary School in Silver Lake. So that's what it financed at the time. So it was set up for a 30...roughly a 29, actually, 29-year bond, and the annual principal payments, also called maturities, were scheduled for February 1 of 2017 all the way through 2045. When those bonds were sold, a call date was established. And a call date is basically when you can refinance or refund...those words are somewhat interchangeable, refinance the bond for savings. Okay? It's not like a home mortgage where you can just go and do it anytime you want, right? You can refund a bond early before that call date, but you have to pay taxable rates on the new bond. So basically, you're issuing new bonds, taking those bond proceeds, paying off the old bonds. And if you do it early and you have taxable rates as opposed to tax-exempt rates, your savings are going to be diminished or totally wiped out. And we monitor this. We run an analysis several times a year to measure what an advance refunding might do before the call date, and as we approach the call date, we start looking at what we call a current refunding. So you have about $19 million worth of callable principal. So it's a fair amount that you can refinance. When you look at refinancing or refunding a bond, the potential basically comes in two forms, or three forms, what the current interest rates are compared to what they were when you issued the bonds. Of course, the lower the interest rates now, the more savings you might have. The larger the bond, so it makes sense if you're refunding, you know, $2 million, you have less potential to save money than if you're refunding $19 million. And then, how far that bond goes out. In this case, you will have 20 more years of principal payments, which is a long time, because most bonds are originally issued for 20 years, and you have like a nine-year call, so you have, you know, 11 years left to refinance. In your case, you have longer. So there's more opportunity to save money the longer it goes out. That said, it becomes much more volatile to changes in interest rates, too. We're going to talk a little bit about that. But you would refund your 2026 maturity. So the call date is February 1 of '25, and you refund all maturities after that. So your '26 through '245 principal payments or maturities will be refunded. The existing rates on those '26 through '245 are 3 1/4 to 4%. Okay? So the district, and then I mentioned the tax abatement bonds, which are not part of this equation, just so you understand, there's a second bond out there. So this is current refinancing. So what that means is, the law allows you to refund these bonds as early as... So what that means is the, the law allows you to refund these bonds as early as 90 days prior to the call date, which is February 1 of '25, or anytime thereafter. So once you hit that 90 days prior, it's considered a current. Current meaning I can issue tax exempt bonds and get those tax exempt rates to heighten or increase my savings versus taxable rates. So obviously the, the new bonds, the refunding bonds would refund, you know, the '26 through '245 maturities of that 2015 bond. And the, the maturities or principal payments would mirror what the old bonds are, so they would still end on February 1 of 2045 unless you decide to do some restructuring at the time. Generally speaking, we, we see very few schools do a restructuring at the time. Most of the time it's just to grab the savings for the taxpayers. And it's a direct savings to the taxpayers. In our words, if you save money, it's not like you can go ahead and use that money in your operations, it's a direct savings to taxpayers. So you have a potential opportunity to, to reduce your future bond payments with this. I mentioned some of those concepts there. So last Monday, a week ago today, we had some bond sales. The best way to judge the market is to take bond sales that are very similar to what this bond structure might look like and take those results and go ahead and, and apply your situation to them. So we are showing about $280,000 worth of savings. Now you can see there's 20 years there, so it's only about $15,000 a year, but it adds up over to 20 years, about 280,000. Now I mentioned the greater the opportunity to save, the more volatile it is. So for every 10 basis points, so one tenth of a percent, it will adjust that number by about $175,000. So that savings, if, if rates go up 15 basis points or 20 basis points, somewhere between 15 and 20, so two tenths of a percent, it would wipe out that entire saving. So this is extremely volatile, it's extremely sensitive to any change in rates. You know, sometimes if you have a different amount, different length of maturity, it will be a little less sensitive. In this case, because you have so many years out there, it is very sensitive to changes in rates. So this here is a one-year trend of the municipal bond index. So this is a 20-year bond and you can see over one year that we're, yeah, just shy, you know, a little bit shy where the high point was over the last year. We're far from the low point. You know, this would have been great at this low point instead of last year, almost a year ago was now, because it would have really increased your savings. Because, you know, if you, to go to that 280 million, right, 280 million, 280,000 savings to a million dollars in savings, you only needed, you know, a half a percent change or lowering of the interest rates, right? And right now we were estimating about 3.8% as of last Monday. And this is a 10-year. So basically you can see we're pretty much at the higher point over a 10-year. Now historically, rates are low. If I keep rolling this back for prior years, they're going to just keep going up. But rates have kind of, over the last 10 years have been fairly low and it's just shy of the high point. Now I just want to go back to the savings sheet because we had two bond sales last Thursday and both of them came in with different numbers than what we saw on Monday's bond sale. And not in a good way. So something happened in the market and we spent several hours this morning analyzing this to see if this was a blip in the market or a trend. A trend is not good because if it continues trending in a negative way, it wipes out your savings. If it's a blip in the market, well then it might go back to what we're saying, seeing and you might save your 280 or 300,000 or whatever the case may be. So it's, it's a little too early to tell, but we had two bond sales and they, they mirrored each other and then we looked at what some other bond sales in the Midwest occurred and the same anomaly, if you want to call it that, showed up in those. And what it was, was when you got to your 20, 35 maturities and after, we saw a big jump in the rates. All the early rates were right on target as far as what we saw on Monday's sales, but the long-term rates jumped and they jumped significantly, half a percent, you know. So as you can see, you have all the way to 2045, so your refunding, because it's long, is going to get hit really hard by rates out in the future going up. Okay? Most times, you know, if we're doing, if we started with a 20-year bond and we're doing 10 more years on it, you might have one or two years affected by that. You guys have a bunch of them. As of, if I apply what happened Thursday to this, you don't have savings. But is that a trend or is it a blip in the market? Now, it isn't that big of a deal at this very moment because we were not selling these immediately. These, we looked at them and we talked about whether we wanted to, this was going to be a normal, we had to wait till November 1 to sell anyway. So it's not like we could have sold these earlier, right? Because by law to be a current is to be within 90 days. Originally, we talked about whether this would be a standalone refunding and we would move ahead on this timeframe that we're starting or discussing, or whether we should wait to see what happens with your bond election in November. And there was some economies of scale by waiting. So in our words, you could possibly combine these with a successful, or bonds from a successful election and you pay upfront costs for one bond instead of two bonds. Also, the, the market wasn't, it wasn't like it was a spectacular market and you're getting these great savings immediately. So there didn't appear to be any hurry to move this along. And you can refund these anytime in the future. Once you hit November 1st, you can use, you can do the tax exempt rates to refund this. So maybe this thing will show, it's got a lot of years. It's going to be refunded at some point. You know, whether rates come back down and we do it, you know, in line with your new bonds, assuming your, your election passes, that might be a January, February timeframe, or whether it's a year out, two years out, or three years out. You've got 20 years for this thing to, to show savings. So there is no hurry on it. What we saw on Thursday, the change in market could be, could be a trend. My concern is it, it's going to be a trend because we had, we had rates drop fairly recently from the federal level. Now that doesn't have a direct impact on this, but investors look at things. So as rates drop, you know, the feds drop the rates, municipal bonds, you usually see an equivalent rate drop. There was a lot of debate on whether that should have been a quarter percent drop or a half percent. And the investing market was comfortable with a quarter percent because inflation's still not at the 2% target, right? So there's a lot of speculation that they won't go above quarter percent because they're still trying to drive the inflation down. So they, they did all the rate hikes to drive the inflation down. They got comfortable because inflation did come down, but didn't hit target, so they expected the drop. When they did 50 basis points, the investors weren't necessarily sold that that was, that they should have went 50 instead of 25. So what they did, we saw the 25 reflected in here. They, on the long-term, they said, we aren't confident that inflation's going to come down in the long-term, so we are not dropping our long-term rates on our bids. And that's what happened. That's what we believe happened. Again, it just happened last week, so, so I'm kind of speculating on why we're seeing that. But there's, there's, obviously whenever you see rates like this, it all has to do with investors confident on what they might be seeing. And if they're putting in higher long-term rates, that means that they believe rates on other investments are going to be higher in the long-term and they'd rather put their money there, which means inflation won't come down as much as what some people were speculating. So that's, that could be a likely scenario. Again, we have to wait and monitor it for a while. Now the good news is this, this will line up with, with the sale, the new bonds, so we have some time to monitor it. So that is where we are. This morning I was looking at it thinking, oh, what am I going to tell? We, we just did this and four days later it's obsolete, you know? But is what is and four days from now it might look great again, who knows? So we'll keep monitoring it and if it makes sense to do it, we will do it with the new bonds. If it doesn't, there will be another opportunity in the future to grab some of those savings. So...
So for the last, I don't know how many years, right? We get the emails from Jeff and, you know, most every time it's nothing. And so we don't necessarily bring this to you guys, you know, for these opportunities because there's really nothing to do. But this is why we have Ellers that, that allows them to do what they're doing and that's why we hire them to do that. While, what was it, a couple of months ago or a month ago, we got, hey, we finally got an email that says we might potentially do something, which then means let's bring this in front of the board so that you can have an understanding of ultimately what potentially could happen. And as Jeff said, it's not necessarily a savings for the school district in terms of what we can, hey, now we can use this money and do this. But I think it's good for us to do so that it shows that our taxpayers, that we are looking at, you know, being able to refinance this and to save it on their end. And while the 16, 17, 18,000 or whatever number it would be each year, you as an individual taxpayer may not see much, but it adds up and then if it adds up to a, you know, like we, we see here with that number, that's where we use our experts to say, yes, this is, this is an opportunity to move forward with this or let's hold it. And we kind of got excited for a little bit because we finally thought that we were going to be able to do something for our taxpayers and now maybe we'll have to keep watching it.
Yeah. Good summary on it.
Summarize it a little bit?
It does, it does. Now if, if it, if that was a blip and rates go back, here's the timeline, we won't go through it, but basically you would be closing on these bonds in February, maybe it gets back to March, it's a tentative schedule, line up with your new bonds. If not, we'll be looking at your new bonds alone in this at some point in the future.
So Jeff, question on, from what you saw last week with the sale of the bonds, if that becomes a trend, how does that impact our potential new bond if the election passes?
It's going to impact the accrued interest on those longer-term maturities. So we were looking at a 20-year bond. So probably year 11 and beyond will have a little higher interest rates. Right now about 20 basis points on those. So it's going to be a little higher, so we'll, we'll play with the restructuring to bring it in at what the tax estimates were. So we might have to do a little restructuring on it to make sure we don't have an issue with the tax.
So you see the tax impact, should the taxpayers changing or how much will be available?
So the, the amount available for the project won't really change. No, that won't change. So let me just pull up the structure here. It's a good question. So I brought my computer in case something like this comes up. Shut down, hang on. All right, so what we have, we have 20 years and it's going to be, your total combined payments are going to be about 2.34 million. And that goes, it's consistent all the way through 20 years. So what I was looking for is whether or not we had built any type of drop down in the future that could fill it. So what's going to happen is when we sell the bonds and we get this, we will put it in to match the structure that was pre-election. And if it comes in at or below the target rate, then that's it, I mean, it's done, it's fine, we'll go with that structure. If it comes in higher than, a little bit higher, then we could change the structure a little bit, maybe add one year to it, you know, just bring it out one more year. Maybe the tax impact is so minimal that you just keep it that way and it adds a few dollars to, you know, home. So those are decisions that we can make at the time, although I can tell you, I do have a cushion built in that. So chances are it won't be an issue unless the trend magnifies. You know, at what we saw, it's not going to be an issue because I have at least a half percent built into this.
Any questions for Jeff?
And Jeff is sticking around, he will be here for our presentation at 8 o'clock tonight, so he'll be able to, he's going to talk more about the tax impact on the bond when you're on. So if you have questions, he will, he will be around. So stick around.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to action item C, Education Minnesota GSL Sonority List. This was enclosure number three. Encloses the proposed sonority list for certified staff. Superintendent Sanju recommends the proposed list be posted for 20 days to provide employees with an opportunity to identify potential inaccuracies in the list. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by, was that clerk? And do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Donna. To post the Education Minnesota GSL Sonority List for 20 days. And do I have any questions, comments before I move to a vote? We do this every year. Okay? So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item D, the SEIU Local 284 Sonority List, action enclosure number four. Encloses the proposed sonority list for employees of the SEIU Local Number 284. Superintendent Sanju recommends the proposed list be posted for 20 days to provide employees with an opportunity to identify potential inaccuracies in the list. Do I have a motion?
I so moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Donna. Do I, and I have a second by Jason. To post the Local 284 Sonority List for 20 days. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item E, Authorization to Continue Limited K-8 Student Transportation During the Winter Months. The GSL School District furnished a limited expansion of the student transportation for K-6 students living greater than one half mile from Lincoln last year and for students in grade seventh and eighth living greater than one mile from school. It is proposed to implement the expanded transportation services again during the 2024-2025 school year, beginning on November 25, 2024 and ending on March 28, 2025, under the conditions specified for this year, only at no additional cost to the school district as long as room is available. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second? And I have a second by clerk. Any questions, comments?
Just so you know, Tricia and I looked into this because it was one of those things that you kind of looked at and said, why not try to do this at the beginning of the school year? Just let's, let's see what this would do. And when you started crunching the numbers, the system that we have in place is still the best to do. You know, we're certainly trying to, to transport as many students as we possibly can, and then at the same time, be able to run our buses as efficiently as possible. And then at the same time, you know, is it reasonable to pick up a kid that live, you know, pay us to transport everybody, but if a, a student lives two blocks away, it doesn't seem reasonable to be picking them up. And so you're trying to find this balance amongst everything. And reality is, is, is that the system that we have in place, I think, is the most efficient and the best way to do it. We do count on some students, you know, using this fall time to, you know, to find their rides and that kind of stuff. And then when we actually do this transportation, many of them just keep that. Because if they all would come on board to take advantage of this service, we would have some, some issues with, with capacity in some of our buses. We do have a few buses that are full. They are certainly full, but they are not over capacity. And so we recommend that we do this, just like we have been in the past.
Okay. I have a motion by John and a second by clerk to adopt the limited expansion of the school district's transportation services during the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, under the conditions specified. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item F, Paraprofessional Hours. Principals Butler and Freitag request approving the following changes of hours for paraprofessionals in their buildings for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Nina Ossland from six-point-five daily to seven-point-two-five, and Paige Trebancy from seven to seven-point-two-five, and Jenna Jokum from seven-point, a decrease, uh, from seven-point-two-five to six-point-five. And these were all effective as of, or to be effective as of nine-four, twenty-twenty-four. Any, oh, there isn't a motion line. This one, okay, so do I have a motion?
So I'll vote.
I have a motion by Jason.
I'll second.
Do I have a second? A second by Donna. To approve the changes for the paraprofessionals as listed above. All those, any questions or comments? And Bill, this is for the rest of the year at this point? Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item G, Crown College PSEO Contract. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Crown College for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
Clerk.
Or, oh, sorry, clerk. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by John. To approve the post-secondary enrollment PSEO contract with Crown College for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item H, First Reading of Policies. It's the recommendation of the Policy Committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. Policy five-fifteen, Protection of Privacy of Pupil Records. Five-sixteen, Student Medication. Five-twenty-one, Student Disability, Non-Discrimination. Five-twenty-two, Title Nine, Sex Non-Discrimination Policy, Grievance Procedure and Process. Five-twenty-four, Internet Acceptance, Use and Safety Policy. Five-thirty-two, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students. Five-thirty-five, Service Animals in School. Six-oh-one, School District Curriculum and Instruction Goals. Six-oh-four, Instructional Curriculum. And six-oh, six-point-five, Library Materials. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Jason. So I have a motion by myself and a second by Jason to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item I, Second Reading of the Policies. The following policies receive their first reading at the September ninth school board meeting. It is the recommendation of the Policy Committee, Directors Lomke and Luckhart, and the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the policies as listed below. Do I have a motion? Okay, which one? Clerk? Sorry, I can't tell the difference between you two today. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Donna. So I have a motion by clerk and a second by Donna to adopt the policies listed above. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item J, Miscellaneous.
Just a question, are we going to be canvassing ballots after the fifth?
It'll be November twelfth, forty.
You'll be okay till then, okay?
Yeah, so with Veterans Day on the eleventh, we were not able to have a meeting. Which kind of coincides, uh, the Cloud Point usually does there, so the Tuesday, that after noon, then we'll have everything for, for the evening Tuesday.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second by Jason to adjourn tonight's meeting at seven forty.